The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting tonight. It's Monday, July 16th, 7:00 PM. I would ask that you all stand for the pledge and Councilman Cox will lead us into it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At the top of our meeting, we have a few presentations this evening for Scott and Andrea Saunders and I'm going to turn that portion of the meeting over to our town manager, Robert Lee.
Thank you very much. For those of you who may not be aware, Scott and Andrea Saunders have, for I guess a while now, been looking to sell their home and we weren't quite sure what they were planning on doing after they sold their home, but what we found out several weeks ago that they were planning to move back to Florida and as a result, this is Scott's last meeting as a town council member and you know, with regards to that, the town council and myself felt it was important to recognize Scott for his years of service and to thank him for his years of service. So Scott, if you could step down here and...
Yes, sir.
Scott, and I probably won't get every, every single thing that he's done, but we've tried to highlight a few things. One is that Scott, you know, served as a member of the Inland Wetlands Commission from 2006 to 2009 and also became a justice and a peace for I guess a brief period of time from 2008 to 2009. But he was first elected to the town council in 2009 and he is serving his fifth term as town council member, having been re-elected four times. And he's been serving as vice chair, I believe, since 2011 as well. Scott has been a dedicated and passionate member of the town council. He has put many hours of his own time researching issues and always striving for what he thought was best for the town of Plainville and in the best interests of its citizens. He's been the liaison to the fire department for many years, which I know took up a great portion of his, and I put in quotes, "free time" as well. Besides serving on the town council, which takes, as I know the town council members are aware, how much time it takes, it's not just coming to the meetings, but besides serving on the town council, Scott has also done a lot of volunteer work along with Andrea, his wife, as well, but just to highlight a couple of them, I think he's attended pretty much every pasta dinner by the fire company over probably the last 10-plus years. He's been a founding member of the Wings and Wheels event along with his wife Andrea. He was a longtime volunteer at the Balloon Fest food tent and also served as a volunteer coordinator for the Balloon Fest as well. He's a volunteer with the Pumpkin Fest and he's served as chairman of the Memorial Day Parade, just to name a few things. Those take a tremendous amount of time and effort and you're going to be, you know, even you know, putting the town council aside, just the volunteer efforts alone, there'll be a big void there when, when you move on to Florida. You know, from my perspective, I believe that Scott has really poured his heart out, heart and soul, to make Plainville a better place to live and he's, you know, him and his wife Andrea have been a 30-year residents of the town of Plainville, have brought their son up as well here, who's down in Florida now, and I think we understand, you know, the pull in that direction, but as a token of, the small token of the town's appreciation for years of service on the town council, so on behalf of the town council and myself, we would like to present you with a chair. So we would like you to come around and at least sit in the chair for a few minutes. Because I, thank you as well. Because what I wanted to do is, I know that Chief Tonner wanted to say a few words on behalf of the fire department.
Yes.
So if you want to step by and sit here?
No. You're not in time, though. Congratulations, sir. Scott, I just wanted to stand up and personally thank you for everything you've done for the fire department, for the fire company, for the town of Plainville and for me personally. There were an awful lot of times when I needed to use somebody as a sounding board and like it or not, you were it. And I didn't always like what I got back from that, but it was open and honest every time, so I appreciate that. You've put a lot of heart and soul into, into the town of Plainville, as much as any volunteer firefighter, most times, so I'd really like to thank you on a professional level as well as on a personal level. I'd like to apologize for our low turnout tonight. We still got a bunch of guys up on the highway. We got the highway closed for a pretty serious accident, so there's a lot of guys here in spirit even though they couldn't be here tonight. Scott, again, thank you very much and we understand that behind every successful man is a very understanding and helpful wife. Andrea, thank you as well. I appreciate everything you guys have done for us. Thank you.
I'd like to say a couple words.
Scott, I just wanted to say thank you very much on behalf of the fire company. Again, as Chief had mentioned and Robert Lee had mentioned, that you were very instrumental in supporting the fire company in all of the events that we've had. Name a few is the pasta suppers, breakfast with Santa, the Balloon Fest, I don't know where you got the volunteers that you got, but they just came out of the woodwork and it's going to be a big void when you're gone, but we appreciate the help that both you and Andrea had provided. And again, one of his most famous lines to me is like, "What do you need? Where do you need me?" And he ended up getting it done, so again, I appreciate it and thank you very much.
You know, when we have these meetings, you know, on a, you know, every other week basis or twice a month basis, what we do upfront sometimes looks like it's, you know, everybody's agreeable and you know, it seems like, you know, everybody's happy and those kinds of things, but I will tell you, there's a, there's a lot of conversations that go on on almost a daily basis and you know, from a personal standpoint, Scott, you know, over the years that he's been a town council member, has challenged me time in and time out with regards to almost every issue. Now, while it may look like we agree on a lot of things, it takes us a while to get there and so I always appreciated the pressure that he put on me to, to really be able to answer questions and to think things out and was very thoughtful with almost every issue, every major, certainly every major issue that came forth over the last 10 years, 10-plus years and there's been a lot of challenging issues that have faced Plainville over that period of time. So with that in mind, Scott, you know, I give you the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like.
Hey.
Okay.
And I would agree that it would be a few, except Andrea said I have way too much here, so hopefully you will indulge me after eight and a half years on the town council. I have a few things I wanted to cover and a few people I wanted to mention and so hopefully you'll all bear with me. And I'm also, I'm speaking for my wife because she is a woman of very few words, a lot of action, but very few words, so a lot of my comments are from both of us. And to make sure that I don't leave anything out or anybody out, I did write everything down, so that's, you know, bear with me as I read it. Andrea and I were first elected on the same night in 2009 and that was an evening that really surprised us both. We were excited about working together with other people to help our community. Two years later, Andrea became chairman of the Board of Education and I became vice chairman of the town council and we've remained in those positions since. But all good things must come to an end and eventually you have to get out of the way and let the next generation take over. After living in Plainville for 30 years, we have submitted our resignations effective next Thursday, July 26th. Andrea came to Connecticut in 1986 from New Orleans where she grew up and I moved here from Ohio as part of a military transfer from the Air Force to the Air National Guard. At the time, I said I would only be here two years, but I met Andrea and all those plans were thrown out the window. So now, after 32 years here in Connecticut, we're ready to move on. We have lots of adventures planned in Florida. Change is hard. We are very nervous about packing and moving more than 1,500 miles away. If you haven't done it, it's very daunting. But we're also excited about the prospects of living near our son and Andrea has a lot of relatives there. We currently only see our son a couple of weeks a year and now he'll be 10 minutes away. So when I told him we were going to have dinner five nights a week with each other, he was hoping we would stay in Plainville. Some of you do remember that we almost moved to Florida back in 2015 and family circumstances caused us to put that on hold, but we're also really happy that we stayed here because we were able to help Dr. Pettit on his campaign for state representative. We will absolutely miss Plainville. We've had a great life here, we've raised our son here, we built our computer business here. We've made friendships that we hope will last a lifetime and we've had an opportunity to serve our community. I want to thank one of your favorite people, my good friend Francesca Heap, because it was his, it was her idea that I actually get involved to begin with and once I did, Andrea got behind me to support me and then found her own calling in politics. We've enjoyed working with everybody on town events. You mentioned Wings and Wheels, which has raised more than $150,000 now and takes over almost 100 volunteers. Pumpkin Fest, founded by some good friends, has been a very nice event for Plainville and has been successful at raising money for the community fund of Plainville. And we've really helped and enjoyed helping the Plainville Fire Company on Balloon Fest. That event draws people from all over and showcases the very best of Plainville. I know the last couple of years, it's been Jim Illinois and Chad Chamberlain that have been running that event and I have really, really enjoyed working with them. We are going to miss all of the people involved, we're going to miss all of these events and we do look forward to coming back in the future and enjoying them as spectators. When I first ran for state representative, Jesse Nazzo was actually my campaign manager, as hard as that might be to believe. And the very first meeting, Jesse told me, "Scott, the second you announce you're running, half this town is going to hate your guts." He was right. In politics, you've got to learn to deal with the ugly, but I do believe that working with good people helps make you a better person. On that note, I want to talk about the town manager, Robert Lee, and I want to thank him. He does an absolutely amazing job coordinating town staff, talking to residents and keeping things moving forward. And contrary to what some people believe, we do not always agree, we do not always get along, but in the end, I think we each know that we want the best for Plainville and we come together and sometimes it's not the end result that's the issue, it's how we get there. I do know Robert loves this town, I know how hard he works to make it nice for all of us and if everybody understood all the things that he does behind the scenes, all the personalities that he has to navigate through and how much he actually gets accomplished, they would simply say thank you. I have come to have a tremendous, tremendous respect for Robert and I will definitely miss him. He got me to see that issues are not all black and white. There are many shades of gray, blue, yellow, red. We have to have a lot of flexibility in our thinking to see that. For the lessons that you taught me, I am eternally grateful. To truly serve others in their best interest, you have to remove your own personal agenda from the equation, so I do appreciate that. On a personal note, several years back, Robert got involved with a weight loss contest, which he won. He's, he's very competitive. Watching his daily and weekly progress inspired me to improve my own lifestyle and nutrition and tonight I stand here 70 pounds lighter than the day I got elected. So I thank you. I also thank you for introducing us to your wife. We've had an opportunity to work on a lot of things with Peggy and Plainville is very lucky to have you both. I have, I had to think hard about who else I was going to thank tonight primarily because Andrea told me this was already too long and I didn't want to, yes, thank you. And I didn't want to insult anybody by leaving them out, so I sincerely apologize if I forgot you, but I really do have to talk about a few people. And first, I want to thank Chris, Rosemary and Jesse for your kindness and decency this council term. Andrea and I will not forget your willingness to work together in the best interests of Plainville and I wish you all the best going forward. I also want to thank Assistant Town Manager Shirley Osley for all she's done over her lengthy career. She's very good at bringing staff together to get things done and I wish her a lot of happiness. Also, I'd like to thank Lisa Matar and Scott Colby, who work for Robert and do a fantastic job keeping everybody informed, including the town council members. Although I'm not on the Board of Education, I do want to thank Dr. Maureen Brummett for her leadership in running our school district. Maureen has shown herself to be an honest partner, working with the town council and the town manager and it has been a genuine pleasure to work with her. Mark DeVoe wears a number of hats in town. He works very hard to attract and retain businesses which keep our taxes down, it's an important function. Mark, over the years, has been very nice to Andrea and me and we thank him for his kindness. On the last page. Sorry, I'll go quick. I want to thank the members of the Plainville Veterans Council who do an awesome job helping veterans and their families navigate through a myriad of issues. Dave Dudek, Dan Culis and Bill Brain come through when those who serve need help and their efforts should be lauded. Dave and I just found out recently, they do a lot out of town, they'll actually go visit veterans wherever they are. Dominic Machini and Mike Woodger do a great job running our roadways department. Their staff not only provides top-quality service, but they save us money doing it and we are very lucky to have their many years of experience on our side. We thank all our friends and neighbors who have volunteered to serve on the boards and commissions in town over the years. It can be a thankless endeavor, but you should all know how important it is that you participate in making Plainville the town that we know and enjoy. And the very last thing I want to talk about is public safety and these guys in the police department, I'll go do the police department first. I think Plainville is in great shape with regard to public safety. We have an awesome police department, we have an awesome volunteer fire department. Our police chief, Matt Catania, is doing a superb job. He has worked very hard to remake the police department and the comments that we hear, we, Andrea and I, hear in all corners of Plainville indicate that his efforts are successful. People have tremendous respect for the police department, a trend I'm sure will continue. Along with his lieutenants, Nick Mullins and Eric Peterson, they do an excellent job protecting the town. For those of you who don't know, our chief has a really, really interesting sense of humor. He makes you laugh no matter what the situation is and I've appreciated that over the years. He also has a true open-door policy when it comes to residents, he will talk to anybody at any time about any problem related to town. I'm happy I had an opportunity to work with him and wish him the best. And on a personal note, Andrea and I want to thank Corporal Pat Buden also because he has always been very kind to us. The Plainville Fire Department, our volunteer firefighters work around the clock to keep us safe. They help us when we're in peril, they put their lives on the line and we all owe them a debt of gratitude. I thank you all for keeping us safe. I can't say enough good about our fire chief, Kevin Tonner, and his wife, Lee. Besides Kevin doing a great job as chief, he and Lee are some of the nicest, most caring people we've met in Plainville. I wish we had an opportunity to spend more time with them, but these are really good people who care more about their friends and neighbors than about themselves and we will miss them. Besides the chief, Deputy Chief Tom Machini is another great asset to Plainville. I will miss his quirky sense of humor, but I do have to tell you, I smile every time I think about him. Our assistant chiefs, Adrian Paradas and Bob Planeta, round out a very strong group of leaders for the Plainville Fire Department and we have a great fire marshal in Larry Sutherland. The other officer that I've worked with quite a bit is Kurt Ploor, captain of the Plainville Fire Company. As captain and like his predecessor, Bob Planeta, Kurt has been a great liaison for the community. Kurt oversees many of the events that provide interaction with the public. He's done an awesome job and he's also lined up solid lieutenants behind him to take over when he's done, when he moves on to chief. So I wish them all well. My last point on the fire company is I do want to thank Doug Doughty, Doug Markorelli, Joey and Matt Wilkinson and Darrell Sally, along with Darrell's wife, Jesse. You guys rock. You represent the spirit that will inspire others to want to join the department. Thank you very much. Last paragraph, I swear. Andrea and I have really enjoyed working with so many people over the years. We've appreciated all the discussions we've had with people in NASOs, the gas station, Lowe's, school functions and the like, about things that you enjoyed or concerns you had about life in Plainville. You kept Andrea and I grounded and aware and made us better public servants. We sincerely thank everyone who has voted for us over the years for trusting us to represent you. It has been a privilege and an honor. Thank you very much.
Obviously you put some, a little bit of thought into your remarks this evening. As this is, as the Board of Education does not normally meet during the summertime, they asked the Board Chair, being Andrea, between the Vice Chair and the Superintendent of Schools, they asked that they get up a few moments as well to recognize Andrea's efforts and Scott, I was going to ask you for one last favor and that was, can Andrea stay behind maybe for a couple of months to help us on some volunteer stuff? Done. Okay. We'll remember that. Deb, I think you were going to come up?
I'll get done from it and I will go up together.
Okay, all right, so I'll relinquish the microphone.
Andrea, I have to say that when I met you, I thought you were just a quiet person, but as I got to know you, I really understood that you enjoyed a lot of different things and you were funny and you had, we had some good times together and you taught me seven years of Board of Education, so I don't know where the eighth year is coming from. Do you think you could send some notes back home for me? But I appreciate all that you have done for us and for the Board of Education. We will miss you. I'm sorry. But we wish you the best. I do have a note here from, or an email actually, from Tim Bubrowski and he wanted me to please give the regrets to Scott and to you. Both are very special and he cannot thank you enough for all that you have given Plainville and the 31st District. So for him, thank you to both of you. Dr. Brummett?
I just want to thank the town council and Mr. Lee for affording me the opportunity to speak tonight as, as mentioned, we don't have a board meeting prior to Andrea's departure. I also want to thank the board members that were able to join us this evening. We've got quite a nice showing and thank you, Deb Hardy, for your kind remarks. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the entire Board of Education to thank Chairwoman Saunders for her eight years of dedicated service to the children of Plainville. For six of those years, Mrs. Saunders served as board chair. With her supportive leadership, numerous district-wide enhancements have been made possible over the past six years, including successful support and implementation of a shared services model, which includes technology, payroll and most recently, human resources and a school resource officer. Our one-to-one Chromebook model for grades three to 12, full-day kindergarten, full-day and a full-week universal preschool for four-year-olds, beginning of two major building projects, the Wheeler Elementary School renovation project and the PHS paving project, enhanced school safety and security and most recently, significant gains on our Smarter Balance Assessment Scores. When I attend meetings throughout the state, my colleagues are always impressed with the visibility and involvement of our Board of Education. This past fall, I was the only superintendent who had eight board members, attend the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, better known as CAE, and that was a very impressive turnout for our board. Our board members also attend many events throughout the school year and five board members are ongoing liaisons to PTOs at every school. I want to conclude by saying that I have been so impressed with how active Andrea has been throughout the Plainville community in events such as the Balloon Festival and Wings and Wheels, just to name a few. She has been truly dedicated and a supportive citizen of Plainville and will be sincerely missed. In honor of her dedication to the board and in keeping with our shared service model, I would like to present Andrea, Chairwoman Saunders, with this beautiful commemorative Plainville chair as well. We have two, I believe. In fact, the bow on there and the Plainville Blue Devil symbol is from us. We're very appreciative of all you have done. We also have a plaque in honor of your years of service to Plainville, so I really appreciate everything that you've done for us and I, would you like to come up and say a few words? We clap.
Before we turn the mic over to you, Andrea, I'd like to say a few words. You know, we don't always control what happens in our lives and it just so happened when Andrea was elected to the Board of Education, the, you know, the party went from a, you know, from a, from one party to the other and Andrea was, it was pretty, I guess they were asking Andrea if she would sit in the middle seat, be the chairperson and having known her a little bit, she came to me and said, you know, "What do you think? I know nothing, really very little about being a member of the Board of Education. I'm concerned about, you know, my knowledge of how it all operates and everything." And I said, "You only need, in my opinion, you need to do two things. You need to have two things. One is you need to have common sense and you need to do your homework." And Andrea had common sense and she's the person who did her homework day in and day out and I think that's reflected in some of the accomplishments that the board and the superintendent and the school district has, has, has had in what might be considered a relatively short tenure. So, you know, I think you remember that conversation we had or something similar to that. From the town of Plainville standpoint, we have a certificate of appreciation for your volunteer service, so it's not quite up to the Board of Education plaque and their ability, their willingness to front a chair as well, but I'd like to bring that to you as well and that was just...
I don't have any planned remarks. I figured Scott said enough for both of us, but I just wanted to say a quick thank you to, you know, the citizens of Plainville, you know, you've allowed me to serve you for, you know, eight and a half years and also entrusted me to the care of your children and the school district and I took that job very seriously and still do. I've worked with many board members. I think right now, we have a great board and I'm really going to miss all of you and I know that everything that we've been able to accomplish, you guys are going to do that moving forward, no matter who your chair is, so I really do appreciate that. And as far as Dr. Brummett, you know, when Dr. Kitchen announced that he was leaving, of course, the first thing I thought was, "Oh my God, who's going to run the district?" Because he told me first and that was something I had to take care of and then when he said, "Dr. Brummett's ready" and then we decided to promote her, it really was the best thing that we did because she's, she's been a great leader and a friend and, you know, we've kind of worked together because she was new, so I kind of was in a little bit of a different position because I was able to help her with a lot of things because she was a new superintendent and I'm, I'm absolutely going to miss you. We have worked great together and I really do appreciate it. And she's also, by the way, she is so involved in the community, you guys cannot have a better superintendent because she's not just, she lives inside the town, but Plainville's our home and I know she's not going anywhere for as long as you'll have her, so I really do appreciate that. And just, I'll just say a couple of things about, you know, we've done a lot of things over the years and, you know, you start doing charity things and all of a sudden, you realize you're doing like five things a year where you, at one point, you were doing nothing, so we've appreciated every charity event, whether it's a pasta supper or the Balloon Fest or Wings and Wheels, we just, we really love Plainville and it's always going to be our home and we're really going to miss everybody, so I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you've done and best wishes for much future happiness.
Does anybody else want to say anything or?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
That would be the time.
Yeah, can I just say a few words? I don't have anything prepared and I'm going to try not to put my back to anyone, but first off, you're both going to be missed tremendously. Now, six years ago, Scott, don't take this the wrong way, but I'm not sure I would have said that. For those of you that know... For those of you that know, Scott and I have actually known each other for, what, over 10 years about now? And I was chair when he applied or was looking to apply to be an Inland Wetlands member. Scott and I have not always agreed. In fact, I would say, most of the bigger issues, we often found ourselves on different sides. But the bottom line is, over the last couple of years, I think we've both probably matured a little bit, got a little bit older, a little bit grayer, which for me, I think has, you know, shown me that, like Scott said before, your opinion's not the only one that matters. It's very important to be open-minded, to understand that people think differently. And I think him and I have come to that understanding that we may not always agree on an issue to start off with, with the right sense of what you're trying to accomplish and remembering that what we want to do is to do what's right for Plainville, that there's always a compromise that makes everybody happy. So from myself, my colleagues, you'll be missed. I told you, make sure, you know, my mother's in Florida now, so I'll be down there hopefully a couple of times a year if she'll have us. But, you know, we certainly like to catch up with you guys if we can. And thank you very much for all your work. And Plainville's a better place for both of you being here and doing what you did the last eight, 10 years. So thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, there are no others. Thank you for those that came and spoke on behalf of Scott and Andrea. We'll be moving on to the regular portion of our agenda. So if you have to go check on the fire or accident or other things, you certainly will take a moment of a break for you to go do that. All right. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so our next order of business is approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2018, special and regular meeting, June 25th, 2018, special meeting.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements and reports to make tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Along with several other members of the council, I attended the Plainville High School graduation a few weeks ago, and it was really a lovely ceremony. And I think it's very nice that the council is being invited and really thank the superintendent and the board for that. On June 26th, I attended the welcome reception for the new library director, Trish Tomlinson, sponsored by the Friends of the Library. It was a very nice event and really enthusiastic person. I think we're going to see great things at the library. And then I went from there to New Britain, to Gaffney School, to the public hearing on the Tilcon quarry proposal. And once again, there were a couple of us, a few of us there. And it was preceded by a presentation from some of the water officials in New Britain and Lennard Engineering. And then a lot of people spoke, and there was a lot more information. And there really is a significant amount of information now on the project. And although it's not something that certainly is, you know, a direct council business at this time, I will note that I have decided that I am opposed to the project based on the body of data that is available.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? All right. I will, I'll keep this brief, but I think it's an interesting story regarding a new business that has come into town. The name of it is ABB. They have taken over general electric functions. ABB is an internationally known company. As they say in some of their literature, when you flip a light switch, ABB probably played a role in delivering the electricity. If you own a car, odds are that ABB robots helped build it. If you've ever ridden mass transit, it's likely that ABB electric motors and power systems kept the train moving. So ABB is an international company that are going to be doing, that's going to be doing some work in Plainville. They've taken over the old GE, let me give you the exact term of the business they're taking over. GE Industrial Solutions. They're going to be in the same location that we have on Woodford Avenue. It was a $2.6 billion purchase of the Atlantic-based GE Solutions, which makes electrical power equipment used in data centers and other big business settings. They are located, their headquarters is located in Zurich, Switzerland. And across the globe, they have about 135,000 employees. So clearly, this is a very interesting company that has come to Plainville, and they're going to be a big part of our community. A couple of the folks that we met, Rosemary was there with me, along with the town manager and state representative, Patty was there. And we were introduced to Tarik Meta, who is the president of Electronification Products. He had just flown in from Zurich, Switzerland. He's a very nice man. We also met Dr. Amina Hanidi Calvo. She's the head of research and development. We met Stephanie Mainz, who is the managing director, and Paul Singer, who is the site leader of the location, with a few other local team members. On Friday, they had a kickoff meeting with the employees that are located at that Woodford Avenue facility. They were very gracious. They explained to us about their presence in the world, what they're going to be doing in Plainville. And my guess is, they are going to be doing a lot more, and we're going to be hearing more from them. So again, this is an international company that has bought the business in GE Industrial Solutions, and they're quite excited to be here and part of Plainville. So it was very interesting to meet them all. Okay. Nobody has anything else to announce? We'll go into appointments and resignations. Our first one?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Scott Saunders from the town council, effective July 26, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Andrea Saunders from the Board of Education, effective July 26, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. Number three.
Motion to appoint Tyler Rizzo, 15 Paul Street, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And a point, a motion to appoint Michael Wisniak, 11 Sunset Terrace, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And finally, motion to accept with regret the resignation of Alex Gerard as a probationary firefighter for the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for all of those. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? Board of Education, I know Mrs. Saunders was here earlier, and, oh, there she comes. Mrs. Saunders? I know you just came back in, but we just got to your portion of the meeting. If you have a report for us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi. Andrea Saunders, 55, Fawn Drive. I know, Robert, I have a couple of items that I think you're going to report on, so I'll just be short on them. But it's basically been a slow, a slow summer. But right now, we have the PHS paving project going on. Dr. Brummett reported after the second round of bids came in within the established, it looks like some of this got cut off.
Authorization?
It says, no, it looks like it cut it off, so I don't really have all of it. Anyway, she says, she says the paving project is going to begin on August 10th, and she'll keep the board informed as to the projected project, you know, the progress of that. And Wheeler says that they began the abatement this week, which was last Thursday. Teachers at Wheeler are being paid, if they want to, a day to go in there and get their classes ready. She's also, oh, I'm sorry, half this got cut off. I didn't realize it got cut off on the hand. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Robert's going to report on it later anyway. But one other thing is, last week, I don't know if you know, Mr. Ladadio, the dean of students, left the middle school. So that position has been replaced. It's going to be called the Assistant Principal for Linden Street and the Middle School of Plainville. And internal candidate Melissa Orfattelli was hired last week. She was the head teacher in literacy, resource teacher at Linden Street School. So she will split her time. It's not all worked out, but she'll split her time, part of the way at Linden, part of the time at the middle school. So in her newly formed position, she's going to assist in the establishment and maintenance of district and school policies and procedures, create, maintain, and promote program development to meet the needs of the student populations, and serve as a resource to teachers and non-certified staff, including teacher evaluation and development. So we're very excited. She'll start in the fall. And that's all I have. So thank you very much for all of your patience when I'm up here reporting. I appreciate it.
I'd just like to make a comment, Andrea. I want to thank you for your leadership on the Board of Education. I know there have been some times where there was some turmoil there that you endured. And I want to thank you for standing up to that. I want to thank you, as the voters did, subsequent to that, because then you became the highest vote getter for the Board of Education position after that, and you were named chair. You have always considered the well-being of the children from your heart. And at the same time, you always kept in your mind the effect it would have on the taxpayer. And as your accounting background proved to be invaluable, as you went through all those pages and pages of budgets, I know that you were truly looking out for everybody. You were looking out for the children, you were looking out for the staff, and you were looking out for the taxpayers of Plainville. So I do appreciate all of the time of service that you have given to the town. I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
I'm sure you will find something very interesting to do in your new location.
Outside of politics.
And have safe travels.
Thank you. I just want to tell just a quick thing now that you say that. I don't know if, people probably don't know this, but back when I ran initially, we had three people running for the Board of Ed. And one of the gentlemen came in, and he said, he lived on Redstone Hill, and he said, a tree fell in his house, so he had to go to Town Hall to figure out how he's going to fix it. And he was told his property's actually in Bristol. So he had to withdraw. He couldn't run. So everybody was like, Andrea, you run, you run. And at that point, I was just supporting Scott. I didn't want to have anything to do with it. So I really only ran so that I'd be, so there would be Saunders on both sides of the sign. Sorry, true story. And out of all the three people, I ended up being the only one that won. No idea what I was doing, so, and here we are now. So anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You handled it well. Congratulations. Thank you. There are no other comments. Report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Have you got anything for us tonight?
I don't have anything prepared for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Onto the report of the town manager. Mr. Lee?
Sure. Before I get started, Andrea, did anyone find out who cut the tree down? First item I have is the Wheeler Elementary School project update. The Capital Projects Building Committee met last week to review 14 trade bid packages that were received for the Wheeler Elementary School renovation project. The specifications included the base bid and 12 potential alternates. The alternates were included in case the bids came in over, over the budgeted construction amount that was authorized. Having these alternates would allow the building committee to negotiate a lower price should they be, should that have been necessary. However, the bids came in almost $1.5 million less than the estimate, which includes the alternates. The building committee unanimously voted to include alternates 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, 10, and 11. They did not authorize some of the alternates as part of the work to be completed. Once the alternates were decided, the lowest responsible bidder could then be determined for each trade package. In some instances, the alternates cross different trade packages. So, you know, so you needed to pick the alternates first, and then the alternates, in some instances, actually determine who the low bidder was. In your meeting package is a list of the 14 lowest responsible bids that were recommended to perform the renovation work, the 14 trade packages, including the alternates that are being recommended by the building committee, total $14,892,121. Building Committee Chairman Mark Belanger was supposed to be here this evening. He notified me late in the afternoon that something came up. He wasn't able to make it. However, ONG project manager Mark Sedensky is here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the building committee's recommendation. I know that there were three council members there as well. And I was, and I attended the meeting as well. And probably Lou Frangos could probably answer a few of the questions as well, since he is a regular attendee of the, of the building committee. He doesn't want to be on the building committee, though, for some reason. Please note that the construction contracts will be between ONG and the contractors listed in the motion, as this is a construction manager at-risk project. There is an item under new business regarding the award of the trade packages as recommended by the Capital Projects Building Committee. And, you know, at this time, I would offer council members, if you have any questions for either myself or Mark, or whether you want to do that later in the meeting, I'd just provide you with that opportunity.
Does anybody have any questions? You've looked, there's a lot of information that was included in, in the package. And, you know, if you would like to ask the questions now, while the town manager is giving his report, it would probably be most timely. I did attend the meeting along with Councilman Nazo and Councilwoman Maranti. We were there. And there was a lot of discussion, and it's a lot to understand. So I think if anybody has questions, it might be good to do that now. And some of the representatives are here. Hi there. That would be able to help us with that. You guys are all set?
I'm all set.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Not a question, but I would just comment that, you know, I would certainly thank the committee for the invite to that meeting last Tuesday, because it was certainly very helpful to have all the documentation and to hear the discussion of the committee at that point. And certainly, when we received our town council packet, it made it a lot easier for you. We had been there last week, as we had already heard a lot of the discussion on it. It was very helpful.
Yep. The only question I have is, when do we anticipate the remaining bids to be? If you'd like to come up?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. We just need your name for the record, if you don't mind, and your company.
I'm Mark Sedensky with ONG Industries. We're the construction manager at risk for the project.
Great. There are a few remaining bids that have not yet been approved, so do you have any idea when those would be coming to us?
There's, as far as trade contracts with ONG that ONG would contract with, no, there are no remaining bids from ONG. There are, there are some bids that the town will contract directly with. One of those would be a testing, excuse me, testing agency for materials testing. And we'll certainly assist the town in putting out an RFP, which we'll do very, very quickly. But that contract will be direct with the town. The architect has yet to bid or assist the town in bidding furniture and equipment and playscapes and technology. So that's, that's a little bit further down the road. The testing would be in the next month, and the furniture and equipment, technology and playscape within the next six months.
Okay. Do you have a timeline in terms of when the completed project would be ready? Or is that, is it too early to say?
No, no, it's not. With, with town approval, ONG will enter into contracts with the remaining contractors in the next three weeks. We have a planned construction completion of March 2020.
Oh. Great. Thank you. Any other questions while I was at the podium?
I would like to point out that Mark has sat down with all of the lowest responsible bidders, has made sure that their, you know, numbers are accurate, that they, you know, that they can provide the proper, you know, requirements, such as, you know, bid bonds and, and, you know, other, you know, completion bonds, that they have a history of positive work in doing such projects. So, you know, and, you know, like, like you pointed out before, they're at risk, so they will be managing the project, and it will be, you know, pretty much guaranteed that it gets completed within, you know, certain parameters. So I would also like to point out that, you know, our building committee is made up of, you know, they've been on, members have been on there for many years. They are people that are in the building trades. They have experience. And they do go through the, you know, all of the information that comes forth from the architects, as well as the construction manager. comes forth from the architects, as well as the construction manager, and, and I think we can feel very comfortable that they're doing their due diligence with respect to their recommendation this evening. It certainly is, is a relatively long process, and having watched them grill the architects and Mark on, on occasion, you know that they're, you know, making sure that Plainville's best interests are being represented with this project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Yep?
With regards to the high school parking lot project update, just a pre-construction meeting with BMW Paving was held, I believe, last week. The contractor is currently on site and has begun doing some work. Most of the repaving work is scheduled to be completed, completed by mid-August, weather permitting, although there, you know, there is, we anticipate that some of the work will carry over to perhaps the beginning of the year, depending upon the weather. The contractor does plan on working a six-day schedule, so things will move along fairly quickly over the next several weeks. With regards to the water pollution control phosphorus upgrade project, in a letter dated June 18th, the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has determined that the town has met all of the conditions and assurances that needed to be met prior to authorization to award the contract. DEEP has authorized the town to go forward with the contract with Daniel O'Connell Sons Inc. of Holyoke, Massachusetts, in the amount of $11,164,800. They have determined that all the work to be performed will be eligible for the Clean Water Fund financing. Council did approve going forward with that project at your last meeting as well. A pre-construction conference meeting is scheduled for later this week, and the project is expected to begin in short order. The project will take a little bit more than two years to complete. A groundbreaking ceremony is being planned for sometime in early August to celebrate the beginning of the project, and included a, just a copy of at least a draft of the groundbreaking ceremony. As soon as we have a date, we'll let the council know of that, and, and hopefully you'll be able to attend that as well. Next item I have is what I call the, what's called the Fats Oil and Grease Management Program Discussion, otherwise known as FOG, and I'll refer to as FOG. The Department of Energy and Environmental Protection requires that municipalities with a sewer system have a FOG program to manage discharges from food establishments located within the sewer service area. There are approximately 80 food establishments in Plainville that would be subject to the FOG program. That includes our, our cafeterias that, you know, that are run in the schools as well. They're considered food establishments. A draft of the FOG program was included in your information package for this evening's meeting. Town staff will continue to refine the recommendation, which will be brought to the town council for action at a future meeting, but we wanted to at least introduce it, give you some information, and, you know, so that you were able to learn more about it, you know. Over the next month or two, we'll be asking you perhaps to take some action on this, this program as well, which is, again, a requirement of the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And basically, it's to make, it's to ensure, come up with a procedure that would ensure that proper equipment is installed in these food establishments to make, to limit the amount of grease that goes into a sewer system, because grease, as some may know, can be very damaging to the sewer system, can be very damaging to pump stations, and cause havoc at times with, with the operation and the flow of sewage from one place to another. We don't need to get too deep into it, but that's kind of the long and the short of it. Unless you want to. Next item I have is tax fixing agreement for Royal Realty. Last November, the town council authorized entering into a memorandum of understanding for a tax abatement for improvements on property owned by Royal Realty LLC in the Farmington Valley Corporate Park. The improvements include a 22,500 square foot addition to Walker Crane and Rigging their complex. The MOU was approved by the town council, and it was for a 40% abatement over four years. It's estimated that when the building is completed, it will generate approximately $42,600 in new revenue. Under the proposal tax fixing agreement, Royal Realty would have a seven, would have 17,000 of that abated annually over four years. There is an item under new business that would authorize moving forward with the tax fixing agreement. The agreement has been reviewed by the town attorney. Next item I have is donation of land, oakland developers. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to find that the proposed donation of land, 3.28 acres, from oakland developers at 123 Ledge Road to the town of Plainville for open space purposes was not in conflict with the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development. The finding was made in accordance with 8-24 referral of the Connecticut General Statutes. In making this finding, the PNZ noted that the land connects to 13.04 acres of existing town-owned open space and is adjacent to 16.3 acres of state open space. The totality of land creates a 32.62 acre wildlife corridor along the Meta Comet Ridge, the Lower Meta Comet Ridge, and is all found within a state-designated national diversity area where two endangered species have been confirmed. There is an item under new business should the town council choose to accept this land for open space purposes. Next item I have is the donation of land from Roger Tofflon Estate and the Connecticut Sand and Stone. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to find that the proposed donation of land from Roger Tofflon and Connecticut Sand and Stone Corporation to the town of Plainville for open space purposes was not in conflict with the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development. The finding was made in accordance with 8-24 referral of the Connecticut General Statutes. The donation totals 33.9 acres and would create a continuous open space area of over 114 acres that stretches from Robert Street Extension to the Farmington Town Line north of Northwest Drive. There is an item under new business should the town council choose to accept this land for open space purposes. Next item I have is parking ordinance discussion. Over the last several years, town staff has occasionally encountered commercial vehicles being parked overnight on residential streets in Plainville. The zoning regulations adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission does not allow certain types of commercial vehicles parked overnight on private property. However, the zoning regulations cannot necessarily address illegally parked vehicle on public property, i.e. on a town road. This has created situations where it is difficult to enforce the overnight parking of certain commercial vehicles that are legally parked on the street, which would otherwise be prohibited by zoning regulations if they were parked on private property. Town staff has researched how other towns have handled this issue, and the recommendation is that the town council consider amending the town ordinance on parking. This would allow the police department to ticket vehicles that were illegally parked under the ordinance. If there are no objections, town staff will work with the town attorney to develop language to amend the town parking ordinance for your consideration at a future meeting. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Yep.
If you park it in your yard, we can take action against you. If you park it on the street, it's become a little bit more difficult to enforce, because you get into court, you know, who you're citing, they're not parking on private property, you know, which is really under the purview, to a certain degree, of planning and zoning, so, the zoning regulations. All right, we'll bring that forward at a future meeting. Next item I have is fire department ordinance discussion. The fire department chief officers have requested that the town council consider amending the fire department ordinance to allow firefighters between the age of 65 to 72 to be allowed to drive apparatus and to use that apparatus at an emergency scene. Under the current fire department ordinance adopted in 2013, when a firefighter reaches the age of 65, they must stop any active firefighting role and either retire or shift over to the fire police. The chief officers pointed out that their recommendation would still prohibit those members over the age of 65 to participate in an active firefighting roles in any other capacity other than the driver's responsibilities. The fire department medical advisor was contacted regarding this issue and stated that as long as they passed their physical, he would not have any medical objection to have them remain as a driver of fire department apparatus. The town's insurance consultant was also contacted regarding the request, and he responded by pointing out that this policy has been adopted in many communities that they service. He pointed out that as long as the town followed the language of the fire ordinance, there should not be an issue, an insurance issue, if such a change were made. Basically said, as long as you follow what's in your ordinance, that, from an insurance standpoint, it wouldn't be an issue. If there is no objection from the town council, town staff will work with the fire chiefs and town attorney to craft language amending the fire department ordinance for consideration at the August town council meeting. I know the chief toner is here this evening.
I am.
An assistant chief, Al Moschini, and I'm sure they would answer any, at least initial questions you may have with regard to this.
I have a question that maybe the chief could answer for me.
Sure.
So this, this, this change in the ordinance, is that going to be retroactive to some, let's say, some firefighters that have recently retired to that, or is it going to be from the point of the ordinance change forward? Did you take any of that into consideration?
We did. Anybody that has shifted over from a regular firefighter to the fire police that are currently on our rolls will be eligible to be drivers. People that have resigned completely from the department and the company would not be eligible.
Oh, okay. Do we have to put that in the ordinance? Does that language have to be in there, or is it going to be put in there?
Well, that's something we'd have to work out. We'd have to consult with, with Attorney Mastriani and, and the fire chiefs to, to make sure that it's clear what the intent is.
Okay. Okay. It's the only question I had. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
One thing that we did find out, and I've had several discussions with, with Kevin and, and the chief officers, is that, you know, 65 nowadays is, you know, like the new 55, or, you know, for some, for some of the members.
Of course it is.
And the technical experience that these, these members have for, for not only driving the, the equipment, but, but doing the setup of the equipment when you get to the fire scene is very critical, and, and they, you know, the feeling is that that is invaluable experience and, and would be ashamed to, to lose, especially given that generally the, especially during the day, people, when they get a little bit into the 65 range, maybe around town a little bit more often than people that are in their 20s, 30s, and 40s. Not quite sure why, but, but some of them actually retire and, and so have, have a little bit of free time to do that. So I think that's, to a, to a great degree, in the, in the best interest of the community to have that knowledge and experience to be able to get those, the apparatus to the scene, and, you know, especially during, during daytime hours during the week.
What is the current roster number with the fire department right now?
I don't know offhand. Kevin, do you know approximately what the?
I'm, I'm not sure either. Low 50s.
Low 50s?
Yeah, I guess, but I want to say it's in the low 50s.
Okay. Thank you.
And not every member of the fire depart, fire company or fire department is a driver.
Right.
You know, so. Okay?
Okay.
Next item I have is the fire department utility two replacement vehicle. The fiscal year 19 capital improvement budget includes a line item of $75,000 to replace the utility two vehicle in the fire department. This vehicle would replace one that is over 25 years old and was donated to the department many years ago. The fire chief is proposing to purchase a 2019 Chevrolet Suburban from Northeast Hills Automotive of Torrington, utilizing state bid prices in the amount of $44,576.68. Additional purchases to outfit the vehicle would also be required but are not part of this evening's request. There is an item under new business that would authorize the purchase of the fire department utility two vehicle from Northwest Hills Automotive Torrington, Connecticut, in the amount of $44,576.68, as recommended by the fire chief. Again, the reason why it's Northwest Hills Automotive is because they're the state, you know, they're state local dealer. I know I pointed this out in an email to the council, but, you know, we were not able to put together the financial dashboard this evening for this evening's meeting due to several factors. One of them is the finance department trying to get ready for the town audit. It's not much different than what we talked about, you know, at the end, you know, towards the end of June, but we should be able to have that finalized, hopefully by the end of this month, and put it online as well, so, you know, that has not been finalized. But with that in mind, I'd like to turn this portion of my report over to Scott to go over some happenings. Do you have any questions or comments?
Good evening, council. I just have a very short few happenings from the Senior Center, just a few events happening this month. They're hosting a Change in Challenges: Developing Personal Resilience on Thursday, July 19th at 10:00 a.m. This is for individuals who are looking to gain that positive attitude when facing adversity and learning how becoming more resilient in these times can lead to some healthier changes in their life. For this event, please call the Senior Center to register. On Monday, July 23rd, at 10:30 a.m., they're hosting Poetry with Peter. This is going to be hosted by Peter Chase, the former director of the Plainville Library. This is going to be a free poetry reading at the Senior Center. It'll feature historic poems about Plainville and growing older. They'll also teach individuals how to write poetry at the same time. This is a free event, and they're asking that you please call the Senior Center to register for that as well. And on Wednesday, July 25th, at 3:00 p.m., they're hosting a Storytime Adventures of the Backpacking Granny, and it's about an individual who backpacked across West Africa and her journey to teach individuals, specifically children, how to read and write during her journey. And they're asking that you please call to register for that event as well. And that's all I have to report on this evening.
Hey, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Scott or for Mr. Lee with their reports tonight?
I don't have a question, but I, I, one of the things that was just discussed under the town manager's report, I just want to make a couple of comments about it. And that is, the fire department ordinance, I know procedurally, this is going to be addressed next month, and being as how I'm not going to be here, I just want to share my feelings on it. So Robert talked a lot about the chief's desire to have the age reign, age changed and raised to 72, and part, and, and part of it is that, knowing some of the people that we've either lost over the last couple of years, or knowing some of the people that their age is going to put them on a list that they would be lost over the next couple of years, I hope this is something that the council will pass in August. These are, these are people who are still vibrant, they're active, they're healthy, they're physically fit, and they have a lot to offer. And in all volunteer fire department, we really, we need to take all the volunteers we can get, so I just wanted to throw my support in there. I hope you guys will consider it next month and, and push that through, so we don't lose anybody else. Thank you.
Yeah, I know that when we, when the council had a subcommittee about five or six years ago to review the ordinance, this topic actually came up about extending the retirement age for firefighters. And I don't think at the time it was just specific to the drivers. I think it was going to be opened up for all to, to, to lengthen that retirement time, so. It was discussed at one time, but I understand the dynamics of the fire company are always changing, and the membership is changing, and, you know, certainly, we will go through the process of a public hearing and all the other things we need to do to make an ordinance change, but it seems that this makes sense right now. If the fire department feels that there are people who are qualified at 65, they'll still be qualified at 66, as long as they pass the required physicals. I would, I would expect that to be okay, but I won't preempt that, because we will have a public hearing and other discussion on it, so I don't want to presume that I will make that decision tonight, but it's certainly worth considering. Thank you. Are there any other comments before we move on? Okay. Thank you, Robert and Scott, for your report. Moving on to the public comments section, during this time of our meeting, we'd welcome, welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given one opportunity to speak to the council for three minutes. I have one person that has signed already to speak, Candace Hall. You'll be first.
I'm Candace Hall, 113 Shuttle Meadow Road, where continually the stop sign seems to be invisible to drivers. The members of the town committee, the members of the town council, I'm speaking tonight because I am concerned about the increase in property taxes approved by the town council and reflected in the invoices sent out, as well as the apparent attitude that Plainville taxpayers will not object, but will go along with a higher town budget without complaint. Well, I am a taxpayer, and I'm complaining. I reference three examples that are a concern. First, at a previous town council meeting, Andrea Sanders reported that the town's teachers were, were awarded a quote, "a modest raise," but did not or would not indicate the percentage or amount of salary. Now, 10 Now, town taxpayers are paying for that raise, so don't we at least deserve to know the particulars? And how does this quote, "modest raise" impact the town budget? A second example is the funding for fire trucks. Town manager Robert Lee was quoted in the article, "Plainville voters approve new fire trucks," in the Hartford Current, as saying, "The long-term financing to pay for the new vehicles pits into the town's debt service at a time when older debts will be paid off and erased." I wonder, when older debts are paid off and erased, does that mean that additional amounts must be assumed to equalize this amount? Is there a particular level of debt that Plainville must not go below? Are lower taxes totally impossible? My third concern is that while taxpayers must pay higher taxes, several Plainville businesses have been given generous, not modest reductions in their taxes, some extending for several years. It appears the concept of lowering town expenditures and the taxes to pay for them is alien to the members of the town council, and residential taxpayers must shoulder the burden. While individuals like myself may complain about how things are done in Plainville, to no avail, I would not be surprised if there is a more organized opposition to the current state of town affairs. And after living next to a piece of exploded delayed for four years, my house is for sale, and I hope that I will be residing elsewhere very soon. I'm requesting that my comments be submitted as part of the minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Does anybody else wish to speak to the town council tonight? Anybody else? John.
John Kissel, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. I wasn't going to talk tonight, but we had a question on this new vehicle from the fire department for $44,000. Where is that money coming from?
It's in our capital plan that we voted on.
That was in the capital?
It's in there.
Okay. That's what I wanted to find out because I figure this is just a third vehicle now and without funding. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos, do you still wish to speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. I'd like to start off by addressing vice chair council Saunders. Good luck to you in the life and your future. I just want to be known that it was Scott who got me interested in attending and participating in town council meetings. He was always ready to explain and walk me through any questions I would present, and I will always remember, and thank you for that. Unfortunately, now thinking about it, I hope mentioning it was you, Scott, that started me participating in town council meetings will not be cause for this council to take your chair away. For Andrea Saunders, Mrs. Saunders, Board of Education Chair Saunders, I always remember calling you to congratulate, if you remember, calling you to congratulate you not only on being elected to the Board of Education, but also the BOE chairwoman. As we discussed it on the phone, you almost came to tears because of the great responsibility you, the responsibility you now have. I told you not to worry, and you would do in time, you would do a fine job in time, and you have done it in flying colors. My personal belief to you, Andrea, is what you did working with the superintendent of schools was not only make the Board of Education just a domain of parents of the Plainville children, but also open to the questions and concerns of the residents of Plainville. You will be missed. Part two, now that I'm trying to stay on a positive note tonight, I would like to start by saying that I have been attending the Capitol Building Projects Committee meetings, and to date, I have nothing but a great respect for their contributions to both the Plainville High School track renovation and the Wheeler School projects. Simply put, and I'm speaking for myself, simply put, you enter the meeting thinking these projects are about bulldozers, dump trucks, and payloaders. However, with every meeting, I have learned there is so much more that must be decided and act on. Again, I thank the committee for their efforts, and of course, the construction groups and the architectural firms also. Do I have any time left, man?
Yes, seventeen seconds.
No, no, because this may get involved. I'll wait for the next meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Mr. Albert?
Dave Albert, Halle Berry Lane. Tilkon Quarry. At first, I wanted to thank the councilwoman who showed up at the meeting. It's a lot of passion there. I thought it was a very weak argument for the Tilkon, and that's my totally unbiased opinion. But I know two of the council people are against, and I think it would be good if the rest of the members would say how they felt on it. And I know Rose's position, and I know Mrs. Tompkins, your position. And this is the biggest environmental issue facing Plainville for decades, and it's really bad stuff, so. And I know it's wrapped up with Tilkon, who's the biggest, if not, I think it might be the second biggest taxpayer for Plainville, so this is more than just a money decision. It really is, that's a total destruction of that area. Second thing is, the Oakland developers' land. Again, I think that you should not be for that. Ask yourself when you're voting, what exactly is the town getting from this? They're really getting, that land is something that the developer did not want. It abuts state land, but it's useless. It's useless. Like I said, just ask yourself, what really is the town getting from here? They're really getting nothing but useless land. And I'll skip this third one I was going to say. And then, I wanted to thank the Saunders for their time they put in here. And I also wanted to thank the town council in general. I know it's a thankless job. People like me come up here and take potshots at you, and it's pretty much a one-sided thing, but we do thank what you do. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Edman?
Joel Edman, 63 Halle Berry Lane. As I stand here at podium, I'd like to reiterate some of why I am opposed to the trail gap closure. It certainly will bug up Plainville's local streets and quiet peaceful neighborhoods negatively impacting many, including traffic. It was suggested $2 million at the Plainville High School, one asked, for the conduit under Route 72. Or does that, it will be more like $20 million? It doesn't surprise me. It's a want, not a need. Plainville does not have to have this. It was quite obvious Tilkon's proposal for reservoir was not received well by the public. What has not been brought up is that for a 10-foot wide trail, there's a need for a 20-foot wide construction zone, more tree devastation, and probably extensive eminent domain. So when New Britain residents get wind of phase number two bugging up their streets, neighborhoods, and parks on its way to Connecticut Fast Track, that will be another point of contention besides the basically empty buses polluting and needlessly passing through Plainville, Bristol, and New Britain well into the night. I'm not sure about after midnight, I need my sleep. By the way, has anyone noticed the number of panhandlers around town lately? They seem to appear out of nowhere, and you don't know if your life is about to end. It's scary. It's happened to me. I'm amazed that Tilkon has not shown any opposition to phase number two trail passing by their busy quarry asphalt and concrete operations. Maybe that's a good sign that the state and federal government are going to oppose it, and that would be a really good thing, especially since Connecticut is the only state that hasn't recovered fully since the recession that started almost 11 years ago. Jeez, do you think money is tight in Connecticut? Even though we are overtaxed with more to come, no wonder why people are leaving Connecticut. Thank you for listening, and have a good night. As always, no rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight? Joanne?
Yeah. Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. I'm going to start with the quarry. A couple of weeks ago, they had the big, and I mean it was big, hearing in New Britain at the Gedney Elementary School. Two, over 200 people were there, it was standing room only, and many, many, oh, first of all, they had the, an hour and a half of pro presentation. That was, of course, Tilkon and the water commissioners and some of the town managers that sent letters that are all for it, and speaking for the people. But, for instance, right here in Plainville, the town manager does not speak for me. I am in opposition to that quarry going forth, as were many, many people. First of all, there was an hour and a half of those that were for it. That's the water commissioners, as I said, and the town council, the city council, and so on and so forth. And then there were the people, the people. There was over maybe almost three hours of people who got up and were in total opposition to the quarry going forth and the reservoir being created because it is not a good idea. It's a bad idea. It's, right now, with the blasting and everything that's going on, there's a lot of complaints that this quarry is, blasting and everything is ruining homes. Going further into that mountain and making a reservoir is going to contaminate our future supply of water. Destroying the watershed is a stupid idea. It's going to open up the laws further in Connecticut to destroy watershed. And I can, I can't, I'm happy to know that there is one person up there on the dais that is in opposition. And it would behoove all of you to really take a good look and listen carefully as to what's going on because it's not a good idea what's happening, what they're trying to propose. Now, I have to say something, the second part of this is, oh, and I'm worried, worried terribly about Boy Rock. They better not touch that because you don't mess around with Indian spirits. And if, that's, that whole mountain is Indian lore, and you just, it's a bad idea. And the other thing is, you've got, well, I just, this is very important.
Time's up, I'm sure you'll wrap it up.
Kathy, this is very important. You started repaving over there at the high school, which I think is a bad idea, too. That's $2 million of wasteful money. And Whiting Street continues to be a washboard, and it's, it's, I can't understand why you don't take care of your roads first. Parking lots come first. As I said, the schools, the schools, the schools get everything.
Time's up, thank you.
Yeah, I know. Hell's bells. It's, you know.
I know. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken?
School time in the chamber.
Anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight?
Farmington gets five minutes.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken? I'll close the public comments section. Thank you for your input. There's no old business, so we are moving on to item number 11, new business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's got to be a way that I don't have to read all of this.
Well, if I may, I need to make a statement before we go into doing these. There are two contracts which are going to be awarded tonight to Ferguson Electric. I have to abstain from those votes. My son works for the company. I'm not sure he's going to even be on that job, but in the interest of openness and fairness, I need to abstain from those two. So if you want to do each one of them individually, I'm happy to support the rest of them, but I have to abstain from two of them. So.
I was going to do it all at once to someone to tell me, can we submit this? Like, if I read this part and say...
Ben, I think you can do that, and I'm saying upfront before the vote, I will not be, I will be abstaining from the two contracts being made to Ferguson Electric. Is that sufficient for what we need to do? Okay.
And if I need to read these, I'll read them. I'm just saying this is going to take a while.
You don't have to read them.
Those are listed. I mean, I'll reference the 1.02 site work, I just won't include the details. That's okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to award bid number 2018-27, 1.02 through 1.15 Wheeler Elementary School renovations with alternates 1356, 79, 10, and 11, for a total amount of $14,892,121. Two, I'll do 1.02 site work to Missy Construction, 1.03 Masonry to Joe Masonry Enterprises, 1.04 General Trades to Syriza and General Contractors, 1.05 Roofing to Imperial Company, Inc., 1.06 Windows and Entrances to New England Glass Company, 1.07 Drywall to H. Carr and Sons, Incorporated, 1.08 Acoustical, also to H. Carr and Sons, Incorporated, 1.09 Flooring to, I'll say, Boral and Conover Floors, Inc., 1.10 Painting to M&amp;P Painting LLC, 1.11 Fire Protection to HHS Mechanical Contractors, Incorporated, 1.12 Plumbing to Ferguson Mechanical Company, Incorporated, 1.13 HVAC to ProMech, Incorporated, 1.14 Electrical to Ferguson Elektra Company. 1.14 Electrical to Ferguson Electric Company, 1.15 Final Cleaning to Orissa LLC. That's a subtotal of $14,892,121. And 1.01, the Abatement and Demolition to Select Demo Services. This was awarded by the council on 6/25 of 2018, and that brings the grand total to Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2019-01, Fire Department Utility to Replacement Vehicle Understate Contract Number 10 PSX 0239 to Northwest Hills Automotive, Torrenton, Connecticut, in the amount of $44,576.68.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? As it was noted, this is included in our capital budget as of this year, so that's where the funding is coming from. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the tax fixing agreement for realty as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I would like to say that some of these things that we do for these companies in terms of their tax fixing agreements, I think it benefits the town. I think it benefits business. I think they're good things for us to be doing in order to get some of these businesses started. And we will realize some of the taxes in the upcoming years, and then certainly at year five, we will be collecting all of the taxes that are involved. So, I do support the efforts of the Economic Development Agency and some of these programs that we have put in place in order to encourage businesses to not only come into our town, but to stay here and expand as well. And this is certainly all about that. So, that's my feeling on it. Are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Lee, have you any other items for us to discuss this evening?
I do not.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.